Good evening. Thank you for joining us at the Monday, December 18th edition of the Board of Selectmen Cemetery Commissioners, Highway Commissioners, and for a portion of the meeting, the Planning Board meeting. Before we begin, this meeting is being recorded, and without objection, the Board of Selectmen Chair will facilitate the meeting under Agenda Item 6 with Planning Board Chair calling for any votes in action required of the Planning Board, including an adjournment at the conclusion of Agenda Item 6. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
First on the agenda, we have appointments. Highway Department, Melvin Gatsky Jr., Highway Foreman. Would you like to?
(Inaudible).
Sure. Did you have anything to say, Jeff, or let him go?
So during the initial budget crisis that the town experienced, we, one of the positions that was lost was the position of the Highway Foreman. Since there has been a restoration to that budget and the need for a Highway Foreman, I had suggested and spoken to Town Administrator about appointing MJ Gatsky. He's been a, I think, 14 or 15-year member of the Highway Department. I'm sure he's probably a familiar face as a town resident, and he's certainly qualified to fill the role. And let him take it from here.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Gatsky, so Highway Foreman. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Lived in town my whole life, but at the Highway Department 14, 15 years. I was the Highway Mechanic for, I believe, 10. And then I stepped up into Highway Equipment Operator. I do all the fabrication welding work. I've been filling in for the last year, well, six months or so, doing mechanic work back in the garage because we're show-handed. Basically, I've been doing everything in the shop, doing getting the snow equipment ready, and all the trucks, and pretty much just trying to keep everything going in the town.
I've seen you helping out at the transfer station, too. You're doing everything to drive the bus.
Oh, yeah.
That's his wife.
Oh, really?
Right?
No.
Oh, she used to.
Well, yeah, my wife.
Geez, I didn't even know that. That was...
Yeah.
Any Board member comments, questions, anything?
Just congratulations. I know you have a good history. So looking forward to making things even smoother.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate MJ on the promotion. I've seen MJ in operation quite a bit. My house was on its power run for a while, and a few times I'd be outside doing my thing, and he'd stop and we'd talk, and even with a foreman and a superintendent, a lot of the guys would reach out to MJ, and he never did not answer. He always answered his phone, answered his radio. Again, you say it all the time, guys like MJ, everybody in town puts out a little bit extra all the time. And he was hired, Fabricator wasn't one of his jobs, but I can't imagine how much he's saved the town just with his extra skills that he had. So again, I agree with Mr. Landry, well deserved, and I'd like to see Jeff complete his team down there.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, based on the Highway Superintendent's recommendation, promote Melvin Gatsky Jr. as Foreman effective immediately.
Yes.
Effective immediately.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Next on the agenda, under Appointments, we have Police Department, Reserve Officer Robbie Leroux and Reserve Officer Mario Conte. Chief?
Just real quick, we only have two reserves. Every year they have to get reappointed. Both officers are in good standings for the Police Department. They're both certified by the Post Commission, and they keep up with their training. I think it would be a great asset to keep them on board for another year. So I would recommend that we reappoint them.
Questions, comments from the Board? Mr. Sullivan?
Chief, one question. Is that the extent of your act of reserve list right now?
The Reserve Officer Program is pretty much done with. When the Reform Act came out in 2020, MPTC, which is the Academy Training Council, stopped holding reserve classes, and they made all the reserves go through a full-time police academy. Some of the officers did not pursue that, and the ones that did are getting picked up full-time to other departments. So last time we had a reserve opening, we had one applicant. So I think it's just, it's a matter of time before we lose our two officers at some point.
Questions, comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, based on the Police Chief's recommendation, promote Officer, reappoint Officer Robbie Barton and Officer Leroux, sorry. That was a long time ago, Paul. And Officer Conte.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations to both of them. And finally, under Appointments, we
have Election Worker, Monique McCoy, term to expire 8/31/2024. Lori?
Good evening. I had submitted a list of election workers on September 1st. In an error, I did not list Monique, so I am putting her before the Board tonight to be appointed as an election worker.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Is there a reappointment, Lori, or is no?
No, she is actually a new. Yes. Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Monique McCoy to an election worker, term to expire 8/31/2024.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, Monique. Next on the agenda, resignations. Paige Moros, Police Patrolman, and declare an open patrolman's position. Chief?
A few months ago, when we were going through the override, Officer Paige Moros was possibly losing her position if the override failed. She applied to some area departments, one of them being Millbury Police Department. She was number, I believe, number two or number three on the list at the time. Since then, there was more openings, and she received a letter from Millbury offering her position. She approached me two weeks ago and decided that because of financial issues, she decided to take the position in Millbury. So as of December 27th, that will be her last day with Dudley Police. So I'm asking of the Board, accept her resignation and declare an opening December 27th, so I can start the process as soon as possible to try to fill that position. And as I mentioned before, this is, this is one of the reasons why, you know, we invest a lot of money and time into these officers, and, you know, there was an opportunity for her to go to the department where her position is pretty much safe because they're in financial stability. And this is the second officer that I've lost, and also the administrative assistant because of the override. So, you know, when I said a couple months ago that people are going to leave and they're not going to come back, this is what happened.
I'd like to make a motion to open a patrolman's position for the Police Department.
We need to accept the resignation first. No worries. You can do that one. I know it's a tough motion to make.
Make a motion. Would regret, Mr. Chair, we accept the resignation of Officer Paige Moros. Wish her well under...
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open a patrolman's position.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Chief, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Do we, when we sponsor someone, we pay them a student officer rate, right?
Yes.
Do we have anything in our rules and regulations which would require them to stay a certain amount of time?
We've, we were in talks about doing that in the last contract, but I believe we didn't, at, at the end of the talks, we did not pursue it this time to go forth with that. Something that we could possibly revisit next contract with the Patrolman's Association, but it was, we were talking about it, but I believe we didn't go forth with it.
Would that be a contract issue, or we put that in the rules and regulations of the Department?
Contract.
Contract? Mr. Chair, we should make note of that. The town should get some kind of, I mean, I'm all for someone moving on, but if we invest time, like Chief said, we invest a lot of time, energy, financial, someone, I think the fire department, they have to stay a certain amount of time, right, Paul?
That was on a different loan program through the association.
Okay. Right. We should look at that then, too. We shouldn't be putting all this time and energy and money.
Mr. Chairman, we will look at that again when the contract comes up, but I think part of the hang-up, and I think, I think the chief was, part of those discussions, part of the hang-up is it's not, it's hard to put enough, enough of a burden on it beyond the cost of reimbursing the town for equipment and so forth, to make it attractive for someone, you know, make it prohibitive for somebody to go to another town. It's going to pay substantially more. So it's not a huge bargaining chip for the town, but it's not off the table for us to work for it. Yeah, let's look at it for the, for the next contract. Can't hurt to look at it and see what we can do.
Canvas some other towns if we have something in place.
Nope, that's fine. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Citizen Comments. Is there any citizen here that would like to speak on something that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing no one. On to the next. Public Hearing, a Poll Hearing. Petition for Joint or Identical Poll Locations. Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. West Main Street. National Grid to install one J.O. pole on West Main Street and remove one J.O. pole on West Main Street beginning at a point approximately 78 feet west of the center line of the intersection of West Main Street and Dudley Hill Road. Removal of existing P-17 West Main Street area and installation of new P-17 approximately 40 feet east. We'll open the hearing at 6:48 p.m., and we're going to continue this hearing until the next meeting because National Grid, with everything going on with the power situation, they have no one to come to speak on this. So we'll be taking this up at the next meeting. Anything I need to do?
Mr. Chairman, January 8th on the next meeting.
Continue in 20 seconds.
So we'll, so we'll continue this to January 22nd.
He requested it.
Oh, okay.
Do you know?
That's it. Excellent. Next on the agenda, Joint Meeting. Planning Board and Board of Selectmen. Bill Scanlon, Short-Term Rental Bylaw with CM RPC Jane Wyerick, Manager of the Land Use and Zoning, Regional Collaboration, and Community Planning. Both Boards may vote on this Agenda Item if required or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Scanlon.
Sure. Thank you. And Guy Horn, Chairman of the Planning Board, we have present this evening, Mr. Dergan, sorry, and Mr. Clark. And Bill Scanlon is with us here. So I'll call a meeting to order, and then we can go on to the Agenda Item.
Excellent. Thank you. Bill Scanlon, Town Planner. With me tonight is Jane Wyerick. Jane, you want to come up? Wherever you feel comfortable. That's fine. Jane is with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and has been working on a regional study to research short-term rentals, otherwise known as STRs. These include companies like Airbnb and VRBO. Jane's project has investigated the impact that these facilities can have on a community, not only in the neighborhood surrounding them, but also on the local housing supply. Part of her scope of work is to make a public presentation on her findings to all the communities that were interested, and I quickly signed up because I think it's an area that Dudley might be interested in pursuing. So Jane tonight is going to go through a presentation, discuss what she's found in terms of how STRs are regulated in the area, and whether, and then turn it over for discussion in terms of whether the town might be interested in undertaking a local bylaw to regulate that use. So Jane, I have a presentation here. Hopefully, there we are.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. That was a great introduction. So yes, we're here tonight to talk about short-term rentals. If you can, next slide. So some of the things we'll talk about tonight are how this project came about, what is a short-term rental as defined by Mass General Law, what the legal requirements are, and what the state allows cities and towns to regulate for, as well as considerations you might want to think about for your community if you want to move forward with a bylaw. We have a draft model zoning bylaw and a general bylaw. We'll talk about the difference between those and how you might want to decide which one would be better for Dudley. A little bit about the process timeline, and then providing a link for another resource, and hopefully have time for a couple questions. Next slide. So this project came about, it was funded through District Local Technical Assistance, or DLTA. It was a joint project with the community planning students at Clark University who did an awful lot of research. They did a lot of data mining. Bill does have a copy of their final report with survey results. If you're interested in seeing those, I'm sure he can send those along. They also surveyed the 40 cities and towns in Southern Worcester County. And we did another short-term rental project with Westbrook Field that was kind of like the baseline bylaw for us. Next slide. So of the 40 municipalities that were surveyed, 24 responded. Of those, only two of them have short-term rental regulations, and only two of them have staff to devote to short-term rental management. That's especially troublesome for the really small towns that have part-time staff, and they just don't have enough staff to take on other duties. 6% said that they have challenges such as noise complaints, community disruptions, a lack of housing stock, and illegal or unregistered short-term rentals. And most of the people come to this area for tourism, for nature, because of the proximity to a larger city, their visiting family, or for historic tourism. And most of them were owned by local homeowners as opposed to corporate owners. Next slide. So according to Mass General Law, this, this is their definition of a short-term rental, an owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or non-owner-occupied property, including but not limited to an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or a furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, bed-and-breakfast establishment, where at least one unit is rented, and all reservations are done in advance. If you want a copy of this presentation for the links that are in it, this is for the actual section of the law. Next slide. So the law was passed in 2018 and went into effect in July of 2019. It requires that all short-term rentals register with the Mass Department of Revenue, and to charge a 5.7% excise, occupancy excise tax rate. It also allows the local municipalities to charge a local room occupancy tax of up to 6%. And the link that is on this slide will show you what other communities are charging for their local occupancy tax rate. And then if operator of a short-term rental has more than one unit in town, the town can also charge an additional community impact fee of up to 3%. Next slide. So towns can regulate for health and safety, the location, density, and licensing and/or registration requirements. Next slide. Some of the housing issues and concerns you might want to think about are whether short-term rentals will have an impact to your long-term housing supply, whether people will be displaced, especially in a time when we have a housing shortage in the state, public health and safety considerations, how will the Board of Health requirements get involved, fire inspections, fire and life safety, possibility of gentrification in neighborhoods if too many people start wanting to convert some of their residences to short-term rentals. Then there's also neighborhood issues of noise, traffic, parking. Next slide. So with the draft bylaws that we have, it allows, it provides a way to regulate the use. You'd want to talk about how to review applications, how to license it, whether or not you want to require that neighbors be notified of any short-term rentals. As we already mentioned, impacts including traffic, noise, parking, lighting, impacts to your affordable housing supply, and whether they are appropriate in all areas of town, or if you might want to restrict it to certain areas. Next slide. Other considerations are, is there a limit to the size of the rental unit? Should you limit the amount of bedrooms that can be rented, or how many guests can be in a rental, or how many cars they can have there for parking? Another topic that we've been talking a lot about is accessory dwelling units, and would the town think it was appropriate to allow accessory dwelling units if it's only for the purpose of becoming short-term rentals, when the purpose of ADUs is typically to increase the housing supply? And then there are Board of Health, building code issues, as well as impacts to wells and septic So as I mentioned briefly earlier, you can do this as a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw, and it can be either by right or by special permit. You'd have to decide how you're going to license it, and who's going to regulate it. Will it be through zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen? And then will it be allowed by right in certain districts, such as closer to your business districts, and maybe special permit if it's more in a residential area? Or, as I mentioned, if it's not appropriate in some areas of town, you might want to prohibit it there. Next slide. So we had an initial multi-town meeting in October with several communities, drafted the bylaws, and we have both the zoning and the general bylaws. And then we're here tonight meeting with you, as we've done with other towns. And with DLTA funding, it needs to be completed by December 31st. So if it's something you think you want to go forward with, we can make any revisions to the bylaws and make it work for the town, or you at least have the model to work with in the future. Next slide. Franklin Regional Council of Governments prepared an extensive presentation that goes even further into depth in short-term rentals. If you wanted to look up this document for additional information. Next slide. And that's the basic presentation. We can also forward on the, the draft bylaws to you. In some communities, so far, all the ones we're working with have done this as a general bylaw because of how it's going to be enforced with the licensing. Did you have any questions?
Chairman, Mr. Chair, you mentioned these are registered with the state.
Yes, with the Department of Revenue.
Is the state providing any inspection at this point, for those that have been registered? Even, I understand that we have some here in Dudley, if I understand it. Are they being inspected by the state at any?
Not to my knowledge.
So it's just wide open?
Mr. Senator, Mr. Chair, Judge?
Does anyone in the town side know how many STRs we have in town?
There are six. The link that Jane provided, it takes you to the Department of Revenue, and they list them. Generally, they don't give specific addresses, but I'm sure you could find them if you went on Airbnb, but there are six on the state website.
I just went on and I found one.
Okay. According to the state website, there are four on Klondike Road, one on Oxford Road, and one on Dudley, Oxford Road.
Mr. Chairman, does that mean, Bill, does that mean they're not properly, does that mean if not, there's some that aren't properly registered or?
Those are the ones that are registered.
Properly registered?
Yes.
Is this, how does this apply to student housing, in terms of being a short-term rental? Does it apply to boarding, to privately owned?
Per the state definition, anything over 30 days, you're considered a tenant and not a transient occupant.
Over 30 days?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's Airbnb, basically?
Right. And so a lot of times, most communities to be in agreement with state law will have a maximum rental period of 30 days on short-term rentals.
I understand the, the general reasoning for these types of regulations. I'm just not sure if we're looking for a solution to a problem we don't have for six parcels. My opinion.
So I guess... So I guess.
For an urban area, I could see, I could see how that really happens, tight markets, right?
So if the town were to pursue a general bylaw, that would be a license process that would be handled through your board as the licensing authority in the town. And if someone wanted to open up, say, an Airbnb in town, there would be various inspections. The fire department would go in and look at for fire safety. The Board of Health, you know, if there are cooking facilities, or if there's a septic system or a well, they'd be, you know, looking at that issue. The building department would look at building code issues. What's the heat, the air conditioning, the electrical wiring, and that kind of thing. So there are various safety inspections that the town would engage in, and then come back to your board and say, you know, we've inspected this property, and we find it meets all code. And in addition to the public health and safety, there would be the opportunity to adopt a room occupancy tax of 6%, which would be enough to cover, I think, those various inspections. And probably there'd be an annual renewal. But that would be, depending on the bylaw terms and what we came up with for how it would actually work. If the town were to pursue a zoning bylaw, for example, then there would be the opportunity to identify various districts where these would be allowed, who would be the review authority, whether it be the planning board or the zoning Board of Appeals, for example. Would it be a special permit or by right use? The difficulty there is that there's a grandfathering provision under zoning, which says that any existing use is legally not conforming. It doesn't need to conform to the bylaw. Whereas with a general bylaw, there is no grandfathering concept. It's, everything must conform to the bylaw once the bylaw passes. So both those existing in those future would come under the terms of a general bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I would submit that whichever option we might opt for, if either one of them were to be considered, frankly, that what I noticed in here, there is provision for notification, as far as the butters are concerned. But it doesn't indicate that there's public hearing, that the butters could do any more than open that letter and see that they've been notified. It seems a little short in that regard, that there should be some opportunity for, in a butter. Suddenly, you're living next to what has become something of a commercial enterprise, which wasn't the case the day before yesterday, but now is. There should be some input or some opportunity for you to speak to that, as in a butter, I would think. I didn't see that in the, I guess I'm looking specifically at the zoning bylaw amendment. I don't know if you could speak to that.
Well, I think that would depend on if you're going to require a special permit for it. Then there would be the public hearing process.
And I personally would feel that that's appropriate, that we should have a special hearing, and that the butters have some opportunity to speak to this issue. Because the circumstances, again, of their residence will have changed. I don't know what the tax impact might be in terms of the evaluations as far as property is concerned.
What does your board then, what is, what, what's your thought process? What are you thinking, pros and cons?
After reviewing this and speaking about it at our meeting with Bill, my thought, and I can't speak for the whole board, but my thought was the town bylaw, to me, made more sense because you could capture the existing ones that are already in place in town. And basically, get them to, you know, if you want to put a special permit on it, then you could, you could do that, and then they would all have special permits. Because, I mean, we may have a situation in town where these six that are currently existing, the butters, may not even know that this is happening. And this would be, this would, at least like Mr. Clark is saying, would give the butters some notice that this is happening. It would also give the town an opportunity to collect some extra tax money. And it would be just a yearly renewal on their licenses, such as what you do with the liquor licenses or the car dealership licenses. It would be similar to that.
Would there be licenses for this? What I'm, I'm thinking, I'm separating the financial impact from the other impact. And I'm thinking, just to break it down, because there are a few different facets here, I think, that need to be discussed. Mr. Clark has brought some of them up. But I wouldn't want the town to spend $10,000, round numbers, $10,000 to inspect these, and the town's getting $200 back. Would there be permit fees for these inspections from these rental units?
If they want.
Yes, yeah.
Because I'm thinking like a hotel. Like if a hotel opened up in town, there'd be a litany of permits and such that would compensate for inspectors.
So if one of the regulations to qualify for the special permit is that you have your home or your building inspected, and you have your septic system inspected, and you have your cooking facility inspected, and you have your wiring inspected, or your septic system and your well inspected, this would all be people coming into the town hall to the various boards and asking for permits to get these inspections completed, so that they could bring them once after everything is completed. They could then bring it to your board to get their application and permit for their Airbnb, or whatever you want to call it, short-term rental.
And these inspections would be customary and usual in like a hotel, a more typical short-term rental. They'd have to do the same things if a hotel chain opened up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think one thing we might want to add to the inspections is to check for parking availability and access. If you were renting to somebody, they could have, in fact, the parties some evening and bring in six additional vehicles, which could end up getting those ware in case of blocking the roadway or creating an issue. You have adequate parking for this facility in terms of who they occupy.
Something?
The way that the draft bylaws are written, there would be an initial application fee, and you can determine what the appropriate fee would be to cover the inspections. There would also be the annual renewal and annual inspections. There could be additional ones if there are complaints, and you have to go out there. And then the owner would be responsible for paying for additional inspections.
Anything else? Mr. Chairman, will we have a, will we have a public hearing on this specifically together? Or is that going to happen with the planning board, or has it happened yet?
Well, you know, I think maybe it would be appropriate to establish a little study committee for this. Maybe a couple members of the Board of Selectmen, a couple members of the planning board get together and make a recommendation on a particular bylaw. If it's a zoning bylaw, that would require a public hearing. If it's a general bylaw, it does not require a public hearing. But we'd have a public informational meeting anyway.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I think, especially on something like this, the public deserves to sort of have like a, you know, to know people are paying attention, you know. That's good. Thanks, Bill.
Wouldn't this also go to town meeting?
Yes.
Devoted by law?
Yes.
So you'll have a number of discussions. So what happens will be the will of the people.
Right, they'll get to town meeting, Mr. Chairman, and then have it like be for the first time.
No, 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 I understand, but I'm just, through my head, we're having this discussion now. Then there's a separate study group, then there's a public hearing, and then there's the town meeting. By the time this gets all filtered down, it's what the people want.
Got it. Nope.
Mr. Sullivan?
How does all that work with the time deadline that Jane talked about, of December 31st, 2023?
We'd have a draft to work on, if anybody thinks.
Is that how it works? We do a draft, good enough, Jane?
Yes, we've provided that to Bill, and he can share that with you if he has not already. And it's just a matter of, there's notes in the document saying, like, insert town name here. Or, you know, some towns have handled it this way, you'll have to decide that. So there's notes to walk you through finalizing it for the town.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Chairman, I think maybe the consideration of this entire change is probably because we're changing the use of, you know, at some point, somebody changes the use of their private dwelling. People retire, people move on, people inherit homes, they change it into a short-term rental. And that necessarily changes its historic use and turns it into a, it turns it into a, maybe, and it becomes an issue of public safety, an issue that requires additional inspection. It becomes an issue of public safety, because if you put people into it for a week, as opposed to a private homeowner who's invested in their property, it tends to turn into a public safety pole for the town. So the ability to go in there proactively and inspect it and to license it is an opportunity to cover those unanticipated costs in the future. And there's no doubt that a short-term rental turns into an unanticipated future cost. Any comments on this?
I guess the only thing I would add is that Nichols College, for example, there would be parents who would want to come and visit their children who are students. There's no motels or hotels in Dudley for them to stay. So I think they would likely tune to a short-term rental for a night or two to come, you know, come visit. So it's an opportunity, you know, for the town to, you know, provide a place for people to stay and make sure that it's safe and well-regulated.
Do we believe that more regulation will create more STRs or less STRs? Open question for anyone.
Well, there is a.
If they don't create the market, we determine that.
There is a requirement that they register with the state. So if they don't do that, then they're illegal. And if they register with the state, there's a checklist that says, do you comply with local regulations, so.
Do you think an illegal STR would be more likely to register if we increase the regulations?
Yes, because they run the risk of, you know, being fined, being shut down. So it's a business decision to.
I would imagine that someone might be upset with them now. I think we need more, more regulation to get them in more trouble.
If I may, I did a little bit of reading on this. One of the hot issues apparently is insurance, liability insurance specifically. If someone is illegally renting one of these, chances are their homeowner's insurance won't cover them with any liability issues that might apply. So their jeopardy is through the roof effectively. At least if they've registered and they have documentation. And hopefully, that will spur their interest in terms of getting the kind of insurance that they would need to keep this thing legal and above board. So, Mr. Johnson?
The other Mr. Sullivan.
The other, yes.
I don't, I don't see how that math works. If they're.
If somebody is committed to breaking, I mean, to going rogue, if you will, on this, then they're going to do it. No way, you can't capture that.
The whole argument just made doesn't make any sense.
Well, no, it does make sense in terms of if there is an issue, and one of these things goes tilt, and somebody has an accident and wants to sue them, the recourse would be to their homeowner's insurance, which would probably not cover them. And their issue then becomes a matter of bankruptcy, in all likelihood. Because, you know, if somebody trips and breaks their knee, or fractures their knee or something, they're going to go to find one of these lawyers that's advertising on 290. And, you know, they're going to take them in the court for every dime they can get, whether it's their homeowner's insurance, or anything of private property, or whatever assets they have. If they've registered legally, then they've got something, I think, in terms of saying, this facility complies with state regulations, A, B, C, D, E. You did something that caused this injury. This facility, again, is compliant in every respect. I think you've got something to stand on then, as opposed to just a naked-as-a-newborn babe otherwise.
I think what's going to happen is, with these regulations, the people who do it infrequently, who rent out their home, their, a room in their home a few times a year, won't do it. They won't go through the, they won't go through the process. The people that will will be the professional people that buy property for that sole purpose. So we have to be prepared. If we do this, we could have, like in Narragansett, Rhode Island, we could have properties that are just rented out without people living there. Now, is that a bad thing or a good thing? Well, there's no one to go to school. There's no school expenses, but on the other hand, I don't know. And that's one thing I like about we're having this discussion now. There'll be the public hearing, there'll be the town meeting bylaw. Anyone who wants to have a bite at the apple and speak on it can. And at the end, we'll end up with what we want. Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, what have other towns around here done, and how have they addressed the short-term rental? Do we know? Just looking for some other data points.
One of the examples I can give you is Westbrook Field. And they wanted to pursue this and asked for the bylaw, because they have lakes, the people have properties right on the water. And they were getting a lot of problems with people renting out a lake house, having a large party. There's like gravel, private pathways or roadways there. And people were just parking all over the place and blocking access. So if the locals can't drive through, then you the can, emergency services. There were noise issues, parking, traffic.
They haven't, they were pursuing it, they haven't enacted it yet?
They haven't gone to town meeting yet, no.
Any other towns you can think of that have enacted this? Western County or Southern?
Great Barrington has.
Great Barrington?
So one of the documents I forwarded to Bill is the results of all of the data mining and survey work that the students at Clark did. In that document, it has it, there are two towns that identified or responded to the survey stating that they do have regulations. I want to say Sutton, but I'm not sure. Sutton and Northborough, maybe?
The Leaver Veer has as well, but obviously they're some distance from there, in a different situation, all likelihood.
That's much more urban, next to Boston, right? And Ocean, a lot of rentals, right?
Fairhaven does, that's Ocean.
Again, I, yeah, the lakes and ocean makes sense. Because I'm trying to figure out, like, from that point, what happens next? What was the outcome, like to Mr. Johnson's point? Did they find out that more people signed up for it, less?
I don't know about those other towns. It'll be interesting to see what happens when Westbrook Field brings theirs to town meeting.
Hey, no, thanks.
You're welcome.
Could we get a, could we agree that we get a couple of members of the Board of Selectmen and a couple of members from the planning board to form this ad hoc committee and go over all the details and make this presentation, or have a meeting that's available to the public before the, before a town meeting or before a proposed bylaw?
With pleasure. What are we thinking?
I have no motion.
I. Oh, let me ask this, does anyone on this board want this? Does someone, is there someone here that is interested one way or the other, either for this, against this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the impression I get from Mr. Scanlon and Guy, it's preferred to be a general bylaw, as opposed to a zoning. For the reasons stated, we can capture no grand final clause. So what would be the, what would be the stated purpose of this subcommittee? What would be the, what would be the expectation of the subcommittee? Because if you're saying, I'm meaning here, right, you guys are already saying general.
Yeah, but we, we, all we have is a draft bylaw. We'd have to finalize it to get it to go to town meeting.
The draft came through central mass.
Correct.
It's almost like sending something to, like a legal review, if there's minor tweaks. I don't think we need to. So. Out of menagerie of a subcommittee, why can't you folks, if we decide general bylaw is the way to go, you folks can just tweak it and bring it forward? That would give us a weaker, tighter review, as opposed to a meeting here, then another meeting, then review this. I think, let it fall into the purview of the planning board, and then the final product comes to us, as opposed to a subcommittee. And Bill's been working with Jane. And I say, in my opinion, if you let that path continue, we have a draft, they have some experience in other towns. Finalize that draft and bring it forward as a general bylaw, and take it to the town meeting. Sound good?
See if the planning board would be willing to do that?
I think the subcommittee would just bog down, one meeting this month, one meeting the next month, next you-know-it. Town meeting will come and go, and.
We can, we can do it at our meetings and, you know, but, and then just bring it, you know, submit it back to your board for your review.
It was a, you know, a week's notice of review?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of how we handle things in the. Yeah, that's kind of how we handle things in the past, so.
Say, you know, they're they're charged with certain things in town, and I think this falls, I served on the board, I think it falls completely up to them.
Next town meeting is in May, so we would have to get it, you know, ready before that and have, you know, not necessarily have a public hearing, but if it's going to be a bylaw, we can just have a we can just have it on our agenda and ask the ask the, you know, notify the public if they want to have input to come to the meeting.
Mr. Marson. But the planning board wants to pursue this, right?
I mean, there's there's already six in town, and I don't think it's going to get any, I don't think it's going to get any less. I mean, I think it's going to continue going up. As as Mr. Scanlon said, people with, you know, people wanting to come to town because of Nichols College or, you know, we have we have a fair number of lakes in town, too. I mean, we have New Pond, Hayden Pond, Pear Pond Pond. I mean, people could people could just start, you know, renting out their houses on the lakes, you know, for the summer and, you know, to make extra money, but the neighbors might have a have an issue with this, so.
We definitely need something just to protect the town long range.
Right.
And when you get it, right now we're talking six properties, but like Guy just said, twelve by the summer, you know? Just throw a number out there.
Okay. I'm good with that approach. Anything else? Anything else?
So we'll put it on our agenda, if that's all right?
Yep.
We'll let you know once we got once we got the draft bylaw worked out.
Thank you.
And I think you just vote to adjourn.
Yep.
We're going to declare a brief recess.
Motion to adjourn. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Get in this, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
We're going to have a brief recess while the planning board expands, adjourns. Next on the agenda, we have Michelle Jervis, Assistant Town Administrator. Board of Selectmen vote on license renewals and new licenses for 2024.
I don't have that. That's not on my agenda. I don't have to do that.
Huh? We are back on, are we back on? Okay, the town administrator just left.
Go to town, we shut down for seven minutes.
Yeah, go there.
Yes.
Do we have to read all of these off?
Well, not really. We have our renewals for 2024, there are no new licenses. And as 2023, they are they're all renewing. So there are no non-renewals in 2024.
You only read them all.
So the.
It's up to you.
Yeah, well, if the clerk could.
Hi, clerk.
Hi, clerk.
Yeah, sure. I don't have the list.
That's Mr. Clerk, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll just.
I don't I don't want to put that on there.
So the renewal for 2024 on premises, all alcohol licenses, off premises, package stores, on premises, wine and malt, off premises, wine and malt club. We have Locke Inc., DBA, Polish Guards, Club Jigga, Forty One Brandon Road, Restaurant On Premise, All Alcohol. Just go through them all and then you'll.
I think you can just say the name. Just the name.
Just the name. Polish National Alliance of Dudley, Imperial Park and Shop, Angel Sheer Wine and Spirits, Shiv Corp, Tong V, Gayan, Nieski Inc., Saint Philopter and Saint Anthony Inc., JNS Blue Inc., Dudley DNC Inc., Jamin Inc., eighty eight's Bar and Grill Inc., Rosemary Archangel Michael Inc., HW Restaurant Inc., Three Dash Shama Inc., Dudley Links Operations LLC, K Jack Inc., Forever Golf, Whiskey Rocks Inc. I so move.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Now renewal, common Victorals license for 2024. Eighty eight's Bar and Grill Inc., Rosemary Archangel Michael Inc., Dudley DNC Inc., Jamin Inc., Saint Philopter and Saint Anthony, JNS Blue Inc., Quick Stop, OM Shiv, Polish National Alliance of Dudley Inc., Subway, Dunkin' Donuts, Dudley Donuts, Cumberland Farms, Leonie's Brick Oven Pizzeria, Dudley Links Operations LLC, HW Restaurant Inc., Jimmy's Pizza, Dip and Donuts, Sturbridge Coffee Roasters, Forever Golf, K Jack Inc., Whiskey Rocks Inc., Orchestra Entertainment and Amusing License, DNC of Dudley, Fire Brands Bar and Grill, Locke Inc., Polish Alliance of Dudley Inc., JNS Blue Inc., K Jack Inc., Whiskey Rocks Inc., I so move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Now Class One license, Agents, Ocellius License, New Motor Vehicles, 2024. Sean and Michael McGee, Inc., I so move.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Class Two license, Secondhand Vehicle Dealers License for 2024. Arkennoir, Ocellius Auto Sales, Robbins Allo Sales, Urin Stelmack and William Stelmack, James Yodid, Henry and Sophia Zidlick, Michael Mayott, Andrew LaCanto, Robert Roman, John McCarthy, Jack Nessif, Anthony Simpson, Legal Auto Sales, SH Auto Repairs LLC, Ziggy Automotive Inc., Eurocars, Zoom Auto Services, ELC Inc., A and S, I so move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Well done. Next on the agenda, Lori Smith, Town Clerk, update to Board of Selectmen and public regarding Town Clerk's Office operational requirements for upcoming twelve month period. Lori.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. It's going to be a really busy year in our office, and I wanted to give you a heads up on some of the elections that we have. Some of you may be aware that there is going to be a special state primary on February sixth, and that's going to be from seven AM to eight PM. This is to fill the seat vacated by Peter Durant for state rep. So some of the deadlines that this entails is nomination papers are already out. They must be returned to our office by five o'clock on Tuesday, December twenty sixth. So if anyone is running for that, you need to get them to us by then. The Town Clerk's Office has to certify the nomination papers by Friday, December twenty ninth, and then the candidates have until January second at five PM to return them to the Secretary of the Commonwealth Office. The last date for people to register to vote for this election is Saturday, January twenty seventh. We'll make arrangements to have someone down in the police lobby where it is a Saturday from nine to five PM. There is no early voting allowed for this election, so we couldn't even opt into it if we wanted to. It's not allowed, but there is vote by mail. So people can register and send in an application to get a ballot by mail. The last day to do that, though, is Tuesday, January thirtieth. That is also the day that we will be posting the warrant by. We may possibly have advanced processing of the ballots, it depends on the volume that we get in. As this was an unanticipated election, we did not include this funding in our Town Clerk budget. And I'm going to get into that in a little bit in the end here. So that's the primary to fill that seat. Then that means that there's a special state election. The state had set that for the same day as the presidential primary, so we're going to have another dual election. It's going to be Tuesday, March fifth, from seven AM to eight PM. The last day to register for this election is Saturday, February twenty fourth, again, a Saturday from nine to five. We'll do the same sort of thing as have someone in the police lobby. It's going to be a little tricky because it's overlapping with the presidential primary. So no early voting is going to be allowed for the state rep election. However, we will be required to have early voting for the presidential primary. So I'm sure that's going to get a little confusing as it comes forward, but just to make you aware. The vote by mail, the last day to request a vote by mail for the state election and the presidential primary is Tuesday, February twenty seventh. Last day to post warrants for both of them is February twenty seventh. We will be doing advanced processing for that, and I have tentatively set Friday, March first, beginning at noon until completed. Again, this was an unanticipated election. Even though it's being held on the same day as the presidential primary, the savings are minimal at best because you still have to have two separate sets of election workers, two ballots, two processing and all of that. Other elections that we're having in 2024, we are having our annual town election on Monday, June tenth. That's from eight AM to eight PM. The state primary, they have set that date for Tuesday, September third, from seven to eight PM, so right after Labor Day. The presidential election is Tuesday, November fifth, from seven AM to eight PM. So as you can see, it's going to be a busy year in our office. As such, I had requested to the Town Administrator to hire a seasonal staff for 2024, and he has approved a nineteen hour per week seasonal office worker to come in. I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of why this is needed. It's not just because of the extra special state primary and special state election. It's because of the overwhelming amount of elections that we have this year. And the elections have changed from in the past with a vote by mail, it's really put in more of a strain. In the past, it would take maybe a month to get ready for an election, and now it's three months. So it's going to be a whole year of elections because one's going to run right into another, some of them overlapping. The other thing our office has been working on is trying to get caught up on dog citations. Since COVID, people have become very lax in registering their dogs. So we have, with the assistance of the police chief and Louis Pachico, we have been following through on these. We've had court hearings. There were approximately three hundred citations that were issued. About a hundred and fifty of them took care of them before it got to the court process. But the court dates, one was December tenth, the next court, because they broke it up into groups because there were so many of them. The second court date is going to be December twentieth and then January tenth. So that also is put in extra strain because it's overlapping with our 2024 dog licenses that are due in January. So we still have people coming in to pay for the last three years while we're trying to issue the 2024. In addition, our census forms go out the first week in January, so we're going to be overwhelmed with census workers. As I mentioned, six elections this year, two town meetings, and could be more if there's any schedule that are in there. All this doesn't include, this doesn't even touch our daily work that we have. So I I just wanted to make you aware of why the need for the extra worker. It's not just that we're trying to get more people working, we absolutely need it. Even if Jackie and I put in extra hours, there's no way we could keep up with this. I don't know if you have any questions or. We'll be putting this information on our website as far as the dates for the elections and the deadlines as we get more information from the state. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that right now. The absentee ballots and the vote by mail will be out on the website as of January first. We have to wait till the first of the year for that. Every year you have to renew those, so those will be up shortly.
Questions, comments from the board, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Thomas, through the chair, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Budget's okay with that?
We we did budget for seasonal help. We have an assistant town accountant's position that has not yet been filled, and we're not actively pursuing it at this time because of situations like that that we know are going to be coming up. You'll notice that Olivia is here tonight, so she's going to be on the clock for us, working while she's home on Christmas break. We'll bring her back when we can, she's going to continue some remote work as as she can, and we'll do the best to support it. It's it's, I don't want to go down the pigeonhole, but this is why we don't budget to the penny for every single line item that we have, because we have to be prepared for things like this to occur. There's no there's no saying no, or we won't do an election or a dog license or pursue those things legally. There's we need that that kind of margin within our budget when we do our budget planning, which, by the way, will be coming up in January again.
Mr. Ruda, this isn't a permanent position, correct? This is a temporary position, this nineteen hours a week?
It's a permanent line item that we've been trying to establish every year. It's a permanent seasonal temporary part time help for these kind of things that addresses issues just like this.
Okay. It it sounds to me, from what the Town Clerk is saying, though, that this is a temporary thing. This is an extra situation with the extra election. I'm asking if there's an end to this position, or is this a new position that was created ongoing?
No, it's not a new position. It's it's a position that we've we've had, we've budgeted for. For example, we have one person who does four or five cemeteries and cleans the building and does all that sort of thing, one person. We previously had three people that did it. So we have seasonal help, we can bring in to help as needed, kind of pinpoint the target, get the work done. And then we either run out of money or we send that person down the road.
I'm just hesitant here, Mr. Town Administrator, because in the same meeting, we're saying goodbye to a police officer that's leaving because of budget constraints. I want to make, I just want to make sure we're not overspending and that this is not a permanent position. This is a temporary position to assist with this temporary situation.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you misunderstood the police chief and the reason that the patrolman was.
I did not misunderstand, Mr. Town Administrator, I did not.
Well, I'm happy to answer the question, but I think we're going to, I I want to make sure we don't confuse the question.
I I want to make sure we're not overspending, that's what I want to make sure.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Essentially, this is, this line item we're discussing is the town hall. Historically, it was called the Town Hall Floater, like we had, we used to have monies for a part time.
That's where I was.
Floater, not that we haven't we haven't filled it in a number of years, but we used to have, it's similar to that, right? This is a position that we're not, it's it's in the budget, but we haven't used it for a number of years.
We, right, we've cut it through.
Right.
Over the last six months, we've cut it and put it back three or four times as we could for just this purpose.
Right, I mean, historically, I mean, Shell's been around a long time. There was a floater, I mean, I'm using the word floater because I used to say floater. So this is extenuating circumstances in the clerk's office, and I think the chairman's question is, I know Laurie didn't give us like a sunset on it, but she talked about elections up up to and including presidential, so I would assume it would probably.
Through November, I would be looking for. We're going to have one election right after another, they're all going to overlap.
This whole this whole election cycle.
Pretty much this whole year because we get done November fifth, and then there's still wrap up that you do for a week or two after that.
And to be fair, I would have to think if, even though it's requested and agreed upon at nineteen hours, just for argument's sake, if she didn't need the full nineteen one week, we're not going to have someone sitting around doing nothing. They'd work twelve.
Right.
Or fourteen.
Up to nineteen.
Yeah, up to, right, right, right. So I think your concerns are warranted, but I think it's.
Thank you.
It's a position, I think, that we've historically tried to. that we've historically tried to keep and have, but we haven't been able to. But as you stated, February sixth, then a primary, then then an election, then a town election, town meetings.
State one.
Presidential, state primary, rolls right in, keeps, keeps going.
Right, they'll all overlap at one point.
Six.
Six?
Six, when it's historically...
One, four at the most for a busy year. Okay, thank you.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
I don't think we, I don't think we had a, we didn't, we don't have anything to say on it, I guess. Next up is cemetery rules and regulations. Vote to amend revolving account number oh four oh five dash four nine one dash four eight eight two dash four oh one two. Cremations to include full burials.
So, Mr. Chairman, this, this adjustment, you want to speak to it, Michelle?
We have a line item for cremations. So when someone, we have a cremation involved from cemetery, we usually pay it out of that account for the overtime, someone if it's going to be a Saturday burial. Now that we deal with full burials, we would like to use that same account instead of opening up a new account. So we can put the money into it and then pay the, the laborer, the worker who had worked that Saturday.
The, the issue is, Mr. Chairman, that it says cremations and doesn't say full burial, so we're just going to, it's a revolving account.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that makes sense to me. So I move that we vote to amend revolving account number oh four oh five dash four nine one dash four eight eight two dash four zero one two. Cremations to include full burials.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, town administrators report continuation of discussion regarding operational audit per B O S chair and example R F P and grant-funded operational audits for review by B O S. B O S votes provides direction or takes any other action relative to this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, in the, in the OneDrive, there's a memo that I threw in there this past week. Following the board's initial discussion regarding the call by a group of residents for an operational audit, I'm providing some additional information. The first point is that the U Mass Boston Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management is a state-approved vendor, and the call, which is essentially the state. And the, the Collins Center completed the town's grant-funded human resources review, so we've used the Collins Center before. It was recommended by the Mass Division of Administration and Finance at the time of the H R review, and A N F is the oversight division of the Community Compact Grant Program. So we had talked at one point about using money from the Community Compact Grant Program if we could be eligible to do that. The bottom line with that is that we have to wait until twenty-six before we can tap into community compact money again because we currently have a grant underway that's being used for economic development purposes. We've talked about that a few times. I've placed a copy of what was called an operational review of the Free Town Town Hall Council on Aging and Library conducted by the Collins Center in September twenty-two in the OneDrive, in, in actually, this, in this meeting's folder. So it costs fifteen thousand dollars for that very high-level operational review of Free Town for those three divisions within that town. There's a copy of the original scope of services that was used to create that operational review grant for Free Town, but I think it's probably too vague and too high-level for what is being asked for here. So the baseline, probably the minimum amount that we could get away with to spend on operational review would be fifteen thousand, but I don't think that would do what we wanted to do. So I've included the scope in the OneDrive, so you can look at it for yourselves and see if that's, needs, needs to be added to. So we don't have grant money available through the Community Compact, but we could always make an exception and pay for it, you know, either through free cash, out of stabilization, or we could budget for it. But in order to do that, we would need to figure out what we want our scope of services to be. There's also a copy of a R F P request for proposals that was published by the town of Hamilton in the town of Wenham for an operational audit of the regional school district out there in two thousand and ten. And this is to give the board an idea of what an R F P for a school district might look like. So that's in the OneDrive and available for the board to take a look at as well. And there's a copy of a R F P that was published by the town of Barnstable for an operational audit for the Administrative Services Department, including finance, procurement, tax collection, and treasury in two thousand and ten. Another example for the board to review. Depending on how the board decides to proceed, there are some procurement options and funding options that the board of selectmen may wish to consider. The Collins Center is part of the Commonwealth and does not require a bid process to proceed, which is why it's been tied to the Community Compact Best Practices Grant Program, as I mentioned. So in other words, you don't need to go out to bid to buy services from another government entity like the Commonwealth, and it's been vetted and approved through A N F to do these sort of things. So it's a consideration. Mentioned I don't, we don't have the grant money till twenty-six for that, but we could find out if we, if we start with, with developing a scope, we could find out what the cost of that might be. And then depending on the anticipated scope of services, the town could also proceed with soliciting three quotes for the service, as long as the anticipated cost is below twenty-five thousand. Or for a more in-depth scope of services, another way of saying, a more expensive scope, we could follow procurement procedures for accepting sealed bids or proposals. And any event, the process requires source of funding, and a source of funding that would be most advantageous and likely available in the spring, the budget for F Y twenty-five. So we have the option of free cash, maybe. We have the option of stabilization. I don't think we have the option of a Community Compact grant at this point, and I've not been able to locate any other form of a grant that would pay for an audit like this. So my suggestion is that we start off with getting a good price by developing a good scope, figure out how to proceed next.
Any comments from the board? Mr. Sullivan?
Just a couple of, an observation and a comment, Mr. Chair. I haven't had a chance to read. The OneDrive was driving for me today. I just got into it, and I noticed right away, in the beginning of the Hamilton Wenham, two thousand and ten, fee for service will not be negoti, will be negotiated, shall not exceed a total cost of ninety thousand. That was thirteen years ago. I can't imagine we're going to get any kind of comprehensive audit, especially if we have to go private at fifteen thousand or twenty-five thousand. People at home got to realize that we've been telling them right along, there is an expense, and like, obviously, we'll do the R F P if we have to. A couple other things, too. Some of those towns are referenced by the private citizen. I had a chance to go on their website and try to look up what their operational audit. And one of the towns hasn't met since two thou, you know, these people were claiming these towns do these on going basis or whatever. Two thousand and eighteen was the last time one town did. One of the other towns, it obviously has to be tailored to our town, but the town that was referenced for us to look at was to meet with the town's finance director and comptroller, of which we have neither. And another one, the private citizen said in writing, it was his understanding that the schools have already begun the process of engaging, and we got an email response from the former business manager that not only weren't they not in the process of engaging of a firm, they hadn't even voted to go to a firm. They hadn't even vot, they hadn't voted to continue on. I thought that, I thought that, my impression of all these discussions was everybody was going to get audited top to bottom. So information's out there, it's just not true. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm, I have nothing to hide. I don't think the town has anything to hide. It wasn't our, I don't want to replay the whole thing, but it wasn't our budget, it wasn't the town's spending or budget that triggered this financial crisis. It was the other side of the budget. And I'm not saying it wasn't warranted, necessary, needed. I'm not questioning the merits, but I've said it bef, excuse me, I said it before, and I'll say it again, for a private citizen to run almost a shadow government, to come forward and say, we're going to challenge the town and let the biggest portion of your tax dollars expenditure, the biggest by far financial obligation that the town is responsible for, not, it's not, it's, it's not fair, it's, it's insulting to the town workers, it's insulting to the people like our auditor that comes from the outside and does our job every year. So I think if we're going to try to proceed down this road, or someone has already basically came forward and said, if you don't agree, I'm going to a different board in town, and if they don't agree, I'm taking a rate to the town meeting. As I said, I only had a chance of going to two or three towns, and they're, like Jonathan said, the audit that he referenced, even the night the auditor was here, those were specifically driven audits. And again, I don't think it's fair to target the town side and not do a comprehensive top to bottom of the entire, every expenditure the town has to have, income expenditure. So I just want to try to kind of set the record straight, because I had people saying to me, well, the schools are doing it. Not as of a month ago, we got that email, right?
Yeah.
So we, I don't think it's changed.
Don't believe they've engaged any.
No, I don't think so either. And Mr. Matthew is now gone, they're in the process of replacing him. So I, I, I don't want people to lose the big picture. And I think this board's been very amiable and amendable to a lot of things, but we, we need to, if we're going to go down this road, we have to, we have to go down the road with eyes open and everybody involved. I guess the only way I can kind of sum it up, but thank you for letting me pontificate, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
No, I agree, Mr. Sullivan. I just thank you, Jonathan, for putting all that together for us. Again, we, this board listened, we heard, people want to do it, but we'll have all the information necessary, and then people can decide if they want to do that. But we have to be comprehensive and look at it holistically from all, all the towns' incoming expenditures for the town and the school. So we would have to join forces at some point, which involves the, the school committee getting involved and so forth, so. Just more to come. My update on that is, I think the state, a lot of people have taken time off this time of year on some of the other departments that I've been working with, so I'll continue to push that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to do briefly, so I'm looking at a town's, a sample operational audit from September two thousand and twenty-two, and one of the first few pages is something called the summary of findings and recommendations. And usually in an audit, that's like the Reader's Digest version. It kind of shows what they found and what they recommend going forward, and the rest pages, the rest of the pages break it down more in detail. I'm just going to read the, they found three findings, just going to read those three. Department budgets are underfunded and critical staffing needs hamper the town's ability to further professionalize services to town residents. The second one, operational changes and modification will assist the town in its current efforts to professionalize town services. And they go on to, from that one, establish a separate appointed board of health, reassert board of selectmen's role as chief executive officer of the town, da-da-da-da-da. Next one, critical space needs limit the town's ability to provide optimal and efficient services to residents and raise concerns regarding the town's ability to persevere, preserve and access town documents. I apologize, I haven't had much coffee today. The reason why I read those is, I mean, people want an audit. What kind of an audit do you want? To get this kind of information is probably going to cost fifty to one hundred grand. And is, is it really solving something? Not against an audit, not against it at all. I, 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 an operational audit, eh, I'd, I'd be upset if I paid fifty thousand dollars for that, just saying. But I, I think what we need to do is, again, like you said, there's some people on vacation. We need to drill down a little more, find out what we can get, put it in front of the people, and have the people say what they want. And if they want something like this, I don't think it should come out of free cash. I don't think it should come out of another department's operational budget. I think it should be a town meeting and people vote to pay for it and choose the method of payment. And I, I think if people are paying for it, they'll be more invested in it, and they'll get something that they want, because you're not, I mean, just about anyone will take anything for free, but if you're paying for it, you pay more attention. Just my thought.
Skin in the game, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, skin in the game. Thank you.
Yeah, this, real quick, too, this audit that was ninety, that was up to ninety thousand thirteen years ago, has twenty-one school, a school-centric audit, obviously, twenty-one categories that they want to evaluate at that time. I mean, I can't imagine twenty-one bullet points now, like I said earlier, it's going to cost fifteen or twenty-five. I think you're, I think you're more in line when you get closer to that hundred thousand figure. I mean, Mr. Ruda, the night the auditor was here, he said you could run it to several hundred thousands. And you're right, we shouldn't, you know, we discussed it that night, that free cash number is artificially inflated, there's reasons for it, why it was, it's a one-time source of revenue, we're probably not going to see that figure again, if ever again. So just because we, it appears on paper we have a little extra money going into the end of this year to, to reach into that one-time source of revenue, to pull out, like you say, pick a number, let the residents decide, a hundred grand? That could be, you know, another position someday, or that could be restoring a position. Hiring department's still short. So I mean, I agree with you, we got to wrap our heads around this and let Mr. Marcy keep doing his work with the state, and Mr. Ruda's already talked about the Collins Center. I mean, they did excellent work for us before, they do excellent work. Yes, we cannot call, we can't fund, can't put in for one this fiscal year, but we can put one in next fiscal year.
Even on this audit, I'm having difficulty finding a signature of someone who did this. Certified fraud examiner, certified management accountant, C P A, something with, someone with letters after their name saying that they, well, can't find it. I'd want that, an audit. Yes, Mr. Marcy?
Mr. Chairman, are we going to put all these out on the, somewhere where people can get them? I mean, of interest is the Hamilton Wenham one, is they're a regional school district, and again, it's thirteen years old, but it might give people an idea of, you know, some of the things that they went through.
That's twenty-one bullet points.
Yeah, no, I see that.
And people can look at them, or else, like, if I can find it, that somebody can find it, they have not met in all six years.
Right. I mean, I think, I think my first choice, Mr. Chairman, would be the grant-funded, which I think Mr. Ruda worked hard to do, but we're, because of the timing, we'd have to wait a year. But it might take us some time to kind of put all the, the scope together, you know, and then get, get alignment from the schools as well to do that, so maybe, maybe things would line up. You know, at least this, I know a lot of, you put a lot of time into this, Jonathan, to getting, getting it to this point, so thank you.
Right, you know, Mr. Chair, too, it's not an anti-school rant, I want to be clear. Because as, as I'm reading it, as I said, number thirteen is building, maintenance, staffing policies, besiege and management, heating, A C. We know they did that because they just came before us with a study that they commissioned to get their heating system updated. We know they did their security system. So some of these things have probably already been hit, but again, some will probably have it. So again, as you said, we're going to have to get somebody in here that can, knows how to do it, whether it's the state, the grant, outside source. Like you said, some with letters after their name that justifies why they're doing the job, not just, and I, and I want citizen involvement, obviously. We have seats on the F A A. If somebody wants to get a firm grasp on town finances while we're trying to hammer out of the audit, go on the F A A. The perfect time, it's budget time now. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, we have about three or four openings, would love to have residents step up. If you've got a skill, step up. If you're still interested, and we go down the road of an audit committee someday, you might want to slide over, but don't just sit in a meeting or Facebook and bash everybody when there's not, no reason to.
Mr. Marcy?
To that point, maybe, maybe a joint meeting with the school committee, because I, I'd hate for us to go down a path that, without them, seeing as we all have to do this together. So some sort of a joint meeting as part of the budget process coming up.
Through the chairman, there's a joint meeting February fourteenth, already on the books.
I knew it was coming, but is that, well, we need to make sure that's on the agenda, just as a, with a discussion, at least.
And another thing, Mr. Chairman, is to consider that in twenty-five, we're going to get a bill for the capital projects that were approved in September of twenty-two. That regional bill is about seven million bucks, and Dudley Side is about three million.
Yeah.
We've got one point four million, one, one point five million between our stabilization accounts. So there's going to be some decisions as to how to pay for that to be made as well.
That, that's one reason why I'm... That, that's one reason why I'm, is being as thrifty as I am, so to speak.
Excellent.
Good. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have special projects intern, Olivia Antetson, update board members on her work to date and upcoming projects. Olivia, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a refresher, I've been working remotely since mid-August as I'm in my final year of grad school at Indiana University. I wanted to take a moment to update the board on some of the projects I've worked on over the past four months. So with grants, uh, we've applied for the Community Compact Best Practices Economic Development Grant, and we did receive that for thirty thousand dollars. I've been working closely with CMRPC on this and we're exploring potential sites for economic development in the town. The Community Compact IT Grant was for cybersecurity improvements. Uh, we did not receive that grant, unfortunately. The Senior Center Modernization Grant, which was to modernize the senior center by painting it, unfortunately, we did not receive, we did not receive that grant either. And then with the Workplace Safety Grant, this would fund things like OSHA ten and first aid training. Uh, they have not released grant decisions yet and we're hoping to hear by the end of the year. These grant applications were a team effort, especially with the Workplace Safety Grant, which required several documents upon submission. Both Michelle and Rich were extremely helpful in getting me the information I needed. With Green Communities, I was the primary contact for the Annual Green Communities Grant. This involved several meetings with CMRPC, the State Green Communities Coordinator, Energy Conservation and National Grid to compile information related to this application, which was for seventy-four thousand, eight hundred two dollars and eighty-two cents. The town applied for funding to weatherize the Highway Department, Fire Department and the library, as well as install new heat pumps at the Highway Department. Funding decisions for that should be released within a couple of months. I also worked closely with Michelle to compile information for the FY twenty-three Green Communities Annual Report. With electric vehicle charging stations, I'm working with Chris Collins from Energy Conservation to get two electric vehicle charging stations installed here at the Dudley Municipal Complex. This is funded almost entirely by a mass EVIP grant. The contract was signed today, so work should begin after the holidays. Things that are HR related, uh, together with Michelle and Aura, I serve on the screening committee to review applications for vacancies within the town. And I worked with John and Michelle to update several job descriptions for the town to accurately reflect the responsibilities of these roles. Related to accounting, um, I've been working with Debbie, our town accountant in VEDAR, I've posted two months' worth of beginning balances for the town's special revenue accounts. And then there are other numerous smaller scale assignments I've completed that would be too much to list here tonight. And then kind of exploring the projects that I'm working on while I'm home for winter break. I'm working on an update to the Personnel Handbook that includes the relevant Collins Center HR policies that have recently been adopted by the Board of Selectmen. I'm also working on an onboarding and offboarding policy so the town can have a more standardized process when, uh, someone begins work and ends work with the town. I worked with John and Michelle to get the cemetery policy updated, so my work on the onboarding and offboarding policies is a continuation of our goal to get out-of-date policies up-to-date and get proposed policies in areas where we are lacking. And I'm doing a complete review of the town's existing policies and digitizing these policies, so all are located in one spot for easy access. And then to continue my work of tracking grants for the town, I'm going to start tracking grants received by the Police Department and the Fire Department. This will provide us with a more well-rounded view of grant monies awarded to the town. And these projects are the major types of assignments I'm doing during the three weeks I'm home, of course, smaller assignments sprinkled in through there. After that, I'll go back to Indiana and continue working remotely during the spring semester. Any questions?
Wow. Mr. Sullivan?
I'm not gonna quite say it like Mr. Landry, but first off, Olivia, we appreciate all the work you do. It's, every time I step in the office, Michelle'll say, oh, I just got this from Olivia, Jonathan tells me. And it's obviously a credit to maintain your academic standing like you have and have the time to do what you do. So we, we, I know I speak for the board on this one, we certainly appreciate everything you do and welcome back home from Christmas.
Thank you.
Yeah, Olivia, that amazed me how, how, what you get done in a short period of time and these things we need that we never quite get to. So thank you. The stuff's all very key and very important, so to keep going, thanks.
Thank, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Olivia.
Next on the agenda, Board of Selectmen vote to adopt HR policies recommended by Edward J. Collins Jr., Center of Public Management, as part of the Human Resources Review and Policy Development Agreement, Equal Pay Act policy, whistleblower protection policy, recruitment and selection policy, references policy.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, departmental communication. Chief, do you have anything?
Uh, just real quick, uh, the update for the storm this, uh, this morning we had. Um, I think a lot of people got, uh, were surprised by the amount of rain we got and the winds. Uh, our department handled about forty calls for service during the day shift. Uh, we only had two offices working and then, uh, the lieutenant jumped in and myself, I also responded to a couple of calls. The Highway Department, uh, did an amazing job helping us out, trying to cone off as many streets as possible that were impassable. And as of just a couple minutes ago, I just checked the, uh, National Grid, there's a hundred forty thousand customers that don't have power from National Grid. Dudley has over two hundred fifty customers. Uh, when I spoke with the rep before the meeting, he was hoping to get everybody back online Wednesday, uh, at midnight. Uh, now, I just got a message that they upped it to Thursday noontime. Now, this is all because of the winds, the, um, they have priorities, uh, they take care of larger areas first, hospitals, uh, colleges, whatnot, and then they move on to smaller communities like us. But he said that as soon as they, um, they get more crews, they'll try to restore power as quickly as possible. So even though it's this Thursday noontime, they're hoping to get it done, uh, as soon as possible. Their crews can only work so many hours at a time and the winds. And last, uh, you know, this is the last meeting before Christmas, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas out there, Happy New Year, thank the community for, uh, their generosity donating the toys. Um, and we had about, uh, the union collected over three thousand dollars in, uh, in money donations that they went out and bought toys to benefit over thirty-five or thirty-six families, uh, this year. So they're gonna be passing those toys out, uh, I think tomorrow night. Uh, we'll do a picture tomorrow with all the toys, but just wanna thank the community for their support with this program, it goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Fire Department, do we have anything?
Just to work off of what the police chief had to indicate about the Christmas drive, uh, the Fire Department has also been working with the Marine Corps Toys for Tots over the past couple of years. There are a couple of boxes in the lobby at the Firehouse, one-twenty-eight West Main. We've had to empty them once already. Uh, hopefully they will be refilled by the time that they get picked up, uh, probably this weekend. So if anybody, uh, does have a, um, an extra toy or, or even clothing, uh, the door to the lobby's always open, come on in, drop it off, and, um, hopefully we can, you know, benefit someone that really needs some help. Otherwise, no report from the department.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Jeff, do you have anything?
So, uh, obvi- obviously along with the Police Department, we had a pretty busy day today with, uh, downed trees, uh, flooding in a lot of areas in town. But, um, some good news other than that, uh, on Friday, we received a notification that the, uh, town will, town has already received a fair share amendment to its, uh, Chapter ninety apportionment. So, uh, an additional two hundred and forty-three, four hundred and sixty-six dollars that, uh, will, uh, add to the, uh, I believe it's four hundred and twenty-six thousand that we already received. So that'll help with some comprehensive paving and, uh, updating some equipment. That's about it.
Question for Jeff, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Jeff, the overlay, one side of West Main, they can overlay the other side, you know?
So the, the overlay that you see was, uh, done by the gas company, um, and then some of the side streets. Uh, I think the patching that's happened on the, where the water, water work happened, that's a, a temporary patch, uh, to get through the winter, but that's, uh, as you can see, in pretty poor condition. So.
Last, last scar to his report. All right, thanks, Jeff.
Water sewer. Is it George, is it Scott? Rock, paper, scissors?
Good evening. Um, the, uh, water projects are finishing up right now for the winter. Um, the roadside will be addressed. Um, some other things may occur during the winter that may have to be, uh, fixed up or whatever, and those will be assessed as they come in. And of course, if anybody has a problem, please call the, uh, water sewer office. Um, asking for the wintertime in case of snowstorms, uh, there's a hydrant near residents, please shovel it out, it would help us out immensely. Uh, we try to catch everyone we can, but sometimes it, it becomes too much for just a couple guys to go out and shovel the town. But, uh, with the help of everybody, we would appreciate that.
So, Jeff, the answer is not yet on that road?
They're gonna be working on it, something with the contractor on that, but, uh, we're not, uh, fully there yet as far as what they plan on doing. Um, there's other factors involved, including weather, uh, time of day, traffic. So that's up to, that's up the, that's being arranged with the engineers right now. So they're working on that. Um, unfortunately, there's been a lot of problems with the delays, the weather, the working at night, and, uh, some of the permission to do it has been delayed through the state. So, uh, there's a lot of blame in this, not just, just the contractor. So.
Georgie, Raiver Alert that went out today, about one-twelve West Main, I thought-
That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a sanitary release because of the amount of water. And we've been out all morning and, uh, looking at all the grates and stuff. And although it's better and the INI has worked a lot, uh, there's still more we have to do with this. And we've already gone into the project phase to, uh, look at the whole piping going down to the, from the intercepted and where that interceptor goes down to the, uh, to the sewer treatment plant area to go into Webster. That whole area has to be looked at and changed out. So just another project we have to get involved in now.
That's, you say interceptor for people home, that's the West Main?
Yeah, that, that goes out and goes down the progress Ave, goes out, yeah, yeah. So that whole piping is inadequate, it's irregular, it's, 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 uh, actually coupled through nineties, ninety, forty-fives, here. It all starts backing up through. It's just, it's just too much, we have just too much more volume now with new houses that we put on from way back. And the town's grown a lot. So, um, we're, we're working on that, we have to get that fixed up, too.
What was the work on progress then? Was that strictly utility work that just got done? Gas? There's already some, you guys are doing some work there, right?
Pro- uh, yeah, they, well, they did the, um, NUCO did work, we did work. Um, the, right now, that work is, is finished. Uh, and they did do a, a quick trench patch job for now, but as the winter diminishes and the good weather comes in, then they're gonna be coming back in. We have other projects to finish up and do, uh, especially fix up, uh, fix up the paving and lawns and whatever else needs to be addressed. And any piping or problems that we have are gonna be addressed, too.
So that was water on progress, not sewer?
Um, no, yeah, it was water on, what we did, no sewer on progress right now. Yeah.
Co-gas and-
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Thank you, George. Um, and Mr. Rogerson from the Veteran Service, I believe we have something for you here?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, we're all very proud of Mr. Rogerson, who was a Veteran Service Officer. Uh, Mr. Rogerson was presented with a citation from the Secretary of Veteran Services, John Santiago, on the tenth of November twenty twenty-three, recognizing him for his exceptional service and dedication to the veterans' community and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And now he covers Dudley and Webster. And he has been recognized, which doesn't happen often, by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Secretary of Veteran Services, for the outstanding job that he has done. And I just want everybody to be aware of that. That this is, you've earned this and we appreciate it.
Thank you for those kind words. Um, of course, it came at a good time, but also at a bad time, 'cause my, of course, my Veterans Kirk is no longer, um, working, uh, for the town of Dudley, which, which is very sad. But this is probably response for her as well, because of the work she did in support of Veterans Office. Uh, she was with me for seven and a half years and she worked with Rich Lovell, my predecessor, for about a year and a half. And unfortunately, she's not returning back to work. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Want to put pictures, you put that on, yeah, I appreciate, we're gonna put that out on.
Yeah, have a couple of pictures.
Stand right in front.
Sure.
Steve.
Congratulations.
Outstanding.
Both towns, well, that's really what it's, we're like the twelfth district in Massachusetts. So.
We started with us, we got you first.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tough thing to follow, but-
Oh, yes, certainly. Well, well, well-earned and obviously recognition is always welcome. Uh, little enough that goes around to people that do the jobs that they do. In any event, I've come before you now as a member of the Library Board of Trustees. I know that, uh, I'm not a department head, so it's, I beg your indulgence at this point. Uh, the library is functioning right now. Uh, we've actually added a Monday evening reader, reading program for the tots, for the kids. And I think we've had at least one individual, one of the Fire Department folks, has provided some entertainment to keep those young youngsters mesmerized at least for a bit. And, uh, we would open that possibility to any of you as members of the Board of Selectmen, wanted to fill in as one of our volunteer readers. Uh, we have a interim director at this point. Uh, we are advertising or looking, actively looking for a full-time director and a child, children's librarian. Uh, the interim director is not working on Mondays, it's, uh, gonna make it a little difficult in terms of her being here to represent the, the library as a department. Uh, just checking in terms of numbers, earlier today, we have five thousand two hundred and fifteen cardholders for the library. Uh, this being the Christmas season and everybody out there buying Hallmark products, you might consider buying or getting, I don't even have to buy it, it's cheaper than Dollar Tree, you can go in and get a library card. Uh, if there are children in the family, grandchildren or children, you can give them the world. The library is there and it's all packaged nice and neatly. And for seniors, it's a warm place to be. I know that we have an aberration today in terms of the sixty-degree weather, but we know what's coming down the road. So we'd welcome anybody and everybody. Uh, obviously the opportunity, perhaps in future, to actually have a meeting on site, on, at the library in the fells room, as we have done in the past with the Board of Selectmen. I know there've been some issues regards to, uh, some of the electronics that might be needed, but I'm sure that if we could've done that, and we did do that some years ago, I'm sure that there's the expertise somewhere in town that we could do that again. Uh, anybody, any questions? Uh, again, the library is, you know, you talk of quality of life issues, with quality of life things in the town of Dudley, that is, I think we rise to the cream of the crop as far as the library facility and the opportunities that are available for people, all people. It, you don't age out, you don't age in, it's everybody.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Clark, for coming forward with that. We, I love that you use the term quality of life, I always use that, it's, it's true. Especially after what, what the library went through this year and the community stood, stood up for it, funded it, there's all those programs out there, you know, take advantage. Thank you for that update.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the student representative. Next, we have board member comments. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, not much, uh, but, you know, it's the holiday season. Uh, everyone take care of each other, show some kindness when you can, and, uh, keep, keep, uh, people that are ill at this time of year, your thoughts are best. Uh, one other comment, uh, about earlier, um, I didn't wanna seem like I was being difficult in regards to wanting to put regulations in place for, for something. I, I just want the town to focus its, uh, its frugal resources on, uh, current and imminent, uh, issues. And if, uh, if that's a urgent and imminent issue, then we probably should spend some resources on it. And try to look at everything through that same filter. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Sullivan?
Be safe, Mr. Johnson said it before I could, check on your neighbors, everybody's got a neighbor that probably needs a little bit of help, or just a, just an ear to listen to every so often, just be kind, check on your neighbors, but most of all, be safe and be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
Yes, uh, the happy, safe holidays goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everybody after today, the wind, the rain, the flooding, just be careful. Like Olivia, people are gonna be home, be with their family and friends, enjoy that time, be safe, spend as much time with them as you can, um, and we'll stay here and we'll just keep working for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Marcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, like, thank everybody who came tonight, um, learned some interesting things, thanks to the planning board for coming, thanks for the update on the operational audit and all the hard work that went into that. Uh, this is our last meeting of the year, as we said, so it's, goes without saying, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, you know, we will be here in January to keep working, so thank you, everybody, please be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. Um, I've got two things. First thing, I, I want to add on to what Mr. Johnson said about, uh, the short-term rentals, and is that an efficient use of our resources or not? And, and that's kind of why I ask the questions of the extra person in the town clerk's office. I, we, we got quite a, quite a scare last year, and I, I just want to make sure we are spending our money where we should, and we shouldn't just be throwing it around because we've got extra, just want to make sure of that. Um, next, we had a couple holiday things, we had the tree lighting, we had the fire truck driving around town, and, and I want to thank all the people who had something to do with that. That, that isn't just a half dozen people, that is a lot of people volunteering their time, people who love this community, and it wouldn't happen, it just wouldn't happen if these people didn't stand up and do something, so, uh, thank you to all of you who had something to do with it. Um, that's all I got.
More from quality of life, right, Mr. Chairman?
Quality of life, yeah, good, good stuff, quality of life. Uh, next up is adjournment.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Motion of the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, Merry Christmas.